Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to our city council meeting dated February 22, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time we'll move on to the approval of the agenda which you all received and had a little time to look over.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Croftman. I would like to remove item 4C and make that an item on the regular agenda. This would be the appointment of an EDA member.
Okay, um, we will do so. Item 4C Economic Development Authority Appointment, we will move that item to the regular agenda.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Croftman again. I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. A motion made, seconded by Councilmember Sullivan. Jasper, you want to take a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Croftman.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Councilmember Mahoney. Councilmember Mahoney. I see it.
It looked like an "I." There we go.
Thank you. Councilmembers Schlitter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance to this meeting. These items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. Would you like to review these for Administrator Krugel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kirby. We did send out revised minutes with a couple clarifications in there today, so that the minutes have been amended. We have dispersments totaling $1,043,269.2. Some items to note, we had our workers' compensation annual payment, $59,441.70. We also made our annual payment to BCI Capital for our lease that we have for our fitness equipment and some of the vehicles that we purchased back in 2018. And then we had our MMPA bill. You see that was $522,000 or $507,233.90, and that's our monthly purchase power. So those are the three items of note from that. We have our financial institution access authorization that this allows Joe Roby, Finance Director, access to our bank accounts essentially. We have a bank account at FFM and then our 4M accounts. And then the resolution accepting the work for the well number three rehab project and approving that final payment. And those are the four items that are on the consent agenda with that item 4C being moved to the end of the regular agenda.
Mayor Kirby, member Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Hey, just a quick question, Jasper. Does item E not, shouldn't that be on a regular agenda since there is a final payment on that?
Um, it's, it, there's, there's nothing requiring it. It can be on consent if it's, if it's non-controversial. So if you want, you can move it, but it doesn't need to be on the regular agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. With that said, any other comments, questions? Otherwise, I'll move to, uh, to listen to any motions that wish to be made.
Member Sullivan, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Do you have a second?
Mahoney will second.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahoney. Any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll take a roll. Administrator Krugel.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Croftman.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Hi.
Councilmember Schlitter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you.
Moving on to public comment. If you wish to participate in public comment, you must sign up prior to the commencement of the meeting. Negative remarks about city staff or employees is not allowed. You will have a time limit of five minutes to comment. The total public comment period shall be 30 minutes for non-agenda items and 30 minutes per agenda item. Disruptive and disorderly behavior will not be tolerated. Administrator Krugel, do we have anybody waiting to give any comments at this time?
Mayor Kirby, at this time, nobody is raising their hands. I did not receive any previous requests to participate in public comment tonight.
Okay, we'll just give it another minute here and then we'll move on. If nobody's checking in, I think we can move on to the regular agenda, if that's okay. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number 6A, electric rate study update, DGR Engineering. We will have Blair, and help me with your last name, Blair Metzger.
Correct, yep.
Thank you very much. I will, I will let Administrator Krugel lead you into this.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. As you mentioned, tonight, we have Blair Metzger from DGR Engineering. What they've been working on for a while here is, is the cost of service study for our electric utility in La Sure. And what, and what we're kind of looking forward to is coming up with a rate structure that, that changes a little bit from what we have today, just kind of updating it. I'm not sure what the last time we updated our rate structure as far as the different account types went, but I know it's been some time. So what Blair's been doing is looking at other, looking at what, what would be the recommendation to move forward here in the sewer for, for different types of, of utility account types. So tonight Blair will be, will be providing an update as far as where DGR is. A couple of touchpoints to think about into the future is likely around June, there will be a Personnel and Budget Committee meeting, possibly before that, to look at what the proposed structure changes will be for 2022. Personnel and Budget will, will look at those and make a recommendation to City Council and hopefully within a month or two from June, we'll be able to adopt the, the rate structure for 2022. And what that really means is it's kind of, we're doing that first this year during the budget process as opposed to in the October, November time period, just so that it gives us enough time as staff to, to make sure we let people know whose accounts are changing to different types based on their usage. So that's a little teaser, but we have Blair here tonight who can, who can really fill you in on the details. We also have Rich Kachere, Public Services Director, who's been managing and facilitating the cost of service project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Blair and Blair can go through. Blair, just let me know when you kind of want me to advance the slides and, and we'll do so. Thank you.
Yep, thanks Jasper. So yeah, let's go ahead and go to the first slide or the next one. So I'm going to try to fairly, at a fairly high level, describe where we've been and what we've done and where we're heading without getting into a lot of numbers tonight because we could really get bogged down. I want to just try to present where we're at. And then as we move forward, we'll start having some more dialogue with, with several people there and toward, going toward the conclusion of the study. So far, just a quick update as to where we've been. Last spring, we were authorized to proceed with a cost of service rate study. Last fall, we met with staff, went through some initial concepts, recommendations and thoughts. And then in December, we sat down and spent a few hours going over some of that, what I would call the recommendations that we would make if we were to proceed at this point without further input as to where we would recommend going. At that point, we decided to, to have this dialogue with you folks and then get some input and then working as we, as Jasper mentioned a few minutes ago, working toward having it finished this summer so that it can be adopted, put into place and ready to go for fiscal '22. So I think that was a good approach instead of, you know, just quickly wrapping things up and putting something into place that we're going to take a little time and, and make sure everybody understands it and is on board with it and likes what we're doing. Because this is really important that we get this right. It's, it's, it's the cash register, if you will, for your utility and we want to make sure that when we do these, we do them, do them correctly and get to where everybody's on board. So, so I'm going to go through some of the high points. Jasper, if you could advance the slide. So real quick, I summarized a lot of these in a memo that's attached to your packet. When we do a rate study, it's really a three-step process that I always talk about. First of which is the financial picture. In other words, you need to have a utility that is financially viable and generates appropriate rate levels to pay the bills and do what you need to do financially. So that's kind of always the first piece. The second piece is you try to figure out who should be paying what part of the total. What we try to do is we try to make it so that everybody's paying their fair share. And that's, that's the bottom line. We want to make sure nobody's subsidizing anybody else and that everybody covers the cost that it takes to serve it. And so that, that's the, what we call the cost of service study. And then finally, we end up with retail rates that, that you all will look at and adopt and will become part of your rate schedule. So that, that's the kind of the three high-level overall overriding pieces to a rate study. Whenever we get into these, we always end up realizing that there are certain specific things that every utility has that we need to focus on more than others. And so point number two there on the slide kind of gets the three things that, that really in your case, I've spent quite a bit of time on so far. First of which being the revenue adequacy, making sure we have enough revenue in the electric utility to do what we need to do. I'll cover that in a little more detail in a minute. As was mentioned earlier, we've been looking at rate class description. In other words, how do we describe the rate classes and who's in what class? And then finally, the rate structures. So what that means is how do we, how do we bill customers for electric usage? And making sure we do that in a way that, that hits the, the cost to serve and also fits with what the electric utility is, is doing currently and meets current electric utility practices. So those are, those are the, the general and kind of specific pieces. I'll get into each one of them here, here in a minute. Jasper, if you could advance the slide. So the first piece was the, the revenue adequacy is what I'm calling it. And that's, you know, the cash flow or the financial picture. And we have a model that we build that looks at all of your cash needs and tries to figure out how many dollars of revenue you need to have to make it all work. Because you're an electric utility, you have a defined service territory that are, that are your customers and you essentially are, I'll use the word monopoly. You, you serve that customer base and you can set the rates where you want to do, where you want to set them. And, and the way a municipal utility does that is it sets them only as high enough as it needs to be to cover all your cash requirements. You don't, you're not in the business to make a bunch of money and, you know, to pay dividends to shareholders and all that. You're just there to provide the service and do so in a financially sound way. One of the things we, we quickly realized with electric utility was is that the, what I call the reserve level had dropped really quite low and needs, in my opinion, and my recommendation, to be built back up to what I would call a sound level, a place that, that puts the utility in a, in a sound footing so that it can handle hiccups that may come your way. What we are recommending, what we've been talking so far with staff, is trying to target, we, we talk in terms of how many days of operating expenses you have in, in reserve. So in other words, if your revenue stream got shut off, how long you could run before you ran out of money, so to speak. And, and our goal or our recommendation is that we have 90 days worth of operating expenses in reserve in the short term and then work our way toward a half a year or 180 days. That's, and that's a pretty typical recommendation for most municipal utilities, most smaller utilities that I work with. If we can get to that point, that's a good number. In your case, that would be, the 90 days would be a couple million dollars and 180 days would be about $4 million. So it'd be a nice, a nice cushion there. It's the kind of thing you want to have enough there so that if something major happens, you've got the ability to react and not, not be in, in financial trouble. So that's my recommendation there and we're going to target that as we go forward. Obviously, you need those funds to do certain things. The major one, or one of the major ones is to, to cover capital improvements. We, our firm recently did a capital improvements study for you and we have come up with a number of larger projects that need to be done in our opinion over the next 10 years. And so I've integrated all those into this cash flow estimate as well. Typically, you borrow funds for that. That would be the typical way electric utilities operate. And, and so I'm building that into it as well. You have lots of other obligations in addition to operating in capitalist expenditures. You've got transfers that you make to the City General Fund. And so we want to make sure we have enough funds available to do that in a way that is, is appropriate. I'll talk a bit more about that later. And, and so putting that all together, what we've, as we look at this 10-year timeframe here, we believe that you can do all the things that I just talked about doing and, and have reasonable rate adjustments. I'm looking currently at, at adjustments somewhere in the range of 2% every other year over the next 10 years. So what I would consider to be reasonably small increases and not all the time, which is a good thing. I mean, that, that's what you want to do. You don't want to be making big increases if you don't have to. You've, you've already made some adjustments in the past few years to help this process, which is good. That helps a lot. And so I think going forward, we've got a pretty good story here that we can do the things we need to do and, and not have large increases that are way out of line. The other thing I will point out, you know, some of the questions I get is well, how do, how do our rates or how do our revenues compare to others? It, it looks, what I would say, really good, really comparable to other utilities of your type and size in, in this area. Your, what I would call the average revenue per, per kilowatt hour, which is what we look at, is right in there and it's not, not the lowest, not the highest by any means. It's kind of right near average, so I think that's good. And, and so as we get closer to finishing this up, we'll look at that closer for you so you have a better picture. But in general, I think this is a good story and, and things look pretty good going forward. So maybe I'll pause a minute there if there's any questions on that piece before we move on to the next section. I know I don't have any numbers for you to look at. I didn't want to get bogged down on numbers tonight. Well, well, I'll be sending you a whole bunch of numbers, probably more than you want to see. But this is kind of the high point of the financial piece at this, at this juncture. If there's questions, I can address them or I'll move on. Can't hear. Are you muted?
I'm sorry, I was muted, yes. You said a good, a good goal is about 90 days to, to, for a reserve level and then maybe work our way into 180 days. What, what would you say, what kind of reserve level do we have right now?
Well, actually, in the past couple of years, it's been near, what I would call near zero. And, and so it was really low, at least what I, what I've seen from what I could tell. I think, and I haven't finished looking at your numbers for 2020, but I think we made some progress there and have a couple hundred thousand for sure, maybe half a million. You know, so we're down to 45 days or something like that. So I think, I think we want to try to improve on that. I think it, it just would be a lot easier for your operating people and people looking at that to have a little more cushion there.
And with these 2% adjustments that you recommend, how long would it take to get to like a 90-day reserve?
So I'm, I'm targeting getting there in three years. So, so I think what we would make is the first, we make the first adjustment and then we do a 2% adjustment, maybe two years down the road and maybe another one four years down the road. And I think by that time, we'd be there. Some, some of these, because we met in December and it was around budget time, I think some of the adjustments already have been built in a bit to the 2021 rates. So I need to figure out exactly where we're at before we move forward and know exactly what the number is for 2022. But I'm expecting that, you know, we'll, we'll do whatever it is, a couple more percent probably for 2022 and then it'll be a couple of years down the road until the next one happens. And I think at that point, you'd be getting very close to that 90 days.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Jasper, you want to move on to the next slide, please? Okay, so the next thing we look at is what I call, I think, did you go to? Did you go back one? There, uh, there you go. Okay, so the next thing that we look at is, is rate classifications. And what that means is we look at your customers and look at their usage level and we try to put people in classes so that people of the same usage are paying the same rate. And, and we try to collect people and get them in a class that fits so that everybody else is similar to them. And, and yet try to recognize that, that those with differing usage patterns should be in different rate classes. And so we have a couple of recommendations here that we're going to propose. They're not huge things, but I think they'll make things a bit more consistent. The first one I mentioned there, right now you've got what's called the large general service class and that covers customers from 25 kilowatts up to 500 kilowatts as a peak demand. And that's a pretty wide range because someone with a, a peak near 500 kilowatts is really a different sort of load than one at 25. And so I'm going to recommend that we establish a small industrial class for those with loads between 200 and 500 kilowatts. And really what, what that is, it's only six customers, so it's not a big number. But it allows us to more closely make in the rate for those customers better than the smaller ones. So it just adds a rate class that I think makes it, allows us to send the right signals and, and structure their rates better to fit them better. So that's one, one recommendation. The second one is the rural customers. Right now, all rural customers are paying under the same rate. And really, there's a difference between some of them. They're larger than others. And you already have this in, in town where you've got a kind of a general service class that covers the small ones and then the large general service class. We're going to do this, I'm going to recommend using the same thing in the rural areas. It only affects nine customers in the large rural class. But again, we're going to have a same usage level more fairly. And, and, and currently, some of those larger rural customers have been moved to the large general service class for this year. And so that's appropriate because that's what somebody in town would pay on that basis currently. So just to make a change here to try to get that to fit again better. And then the last thing in this section is the governmental and interdepartmental customers. So city loads and other utility loads. Currently, there's a municipal class that covers, it's a smaller, I should say, a lower rate that covers those customers. And while there may be some justification for treating your own customers better than others, I think what I'm going to recommend is to go ahead and put everybody in the appropriate class based on their usage level, just like everybody else. And then if there's a need to do any sort of transferring or subsidizing, if you will, for your interdepartmental or governmental loads, that we handle that somehow in a transfer between utility, utilities. And I, I think that's a, that's a more appropriate way to do it. That way, everybody's treated the same to start with and you can deal with those subsidization later in a, in a transfer fashion. It helps to keep things cleaner and when you look at things as to what real costs are, it's a better way to do it. So I'm going to make that recommendation. Doesn't really impact much overall, but it's one of those things that I think ought to be made while we're at it. So, so that, that's, that's kind of the, the high points of my rate classification recommendations. I spent quite a bit of time looking at data and, and trying to solve, solve this and get this closer to what I think it should be. So a lot of numbers got crunched in the background here, but this is kind of the recommendation I'm going to make. It probably doesn't have a lot of impact in general, but it's just one of those things that should get done, in my view. So any questions on any of that at this point?
Yes, this is Councilmember Croftman. If I may, Mr. Mayor. Blair, we tend to use terms sometimes that are not clear to people who are not in the electric industry. Would you define for us what you mean in the last number three here? What you mean by load characteristics?
Sure. So when I, when I'm talking about load characteristics, I'm talking about what the meter is reading. So we talk about electrical load. It's the size of the load or the, how much energy is being used. And so how we set classes of customers up is, is based on how many, if you're a larger customer, we use both a demand rate and an energy rate. Demand covers how much load is used at any one time. It's like a capacity, if you will, whereas energy is how much gets used over the course of a month. It's more of a time-based thing. And so when I talk about load, I'm talking about the size of, of that. So those that are larger are in a different rate class. Those have a higher load are in a different rate class and those have a smaller load. So when I use the term load characteristic, I'm talking about the size of electrical metered data that we record and, and use for billing purposes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jasper. Okay, so, so the last thing that we, we looked at is what I call a rate structure. And what this gets down to is how do we, how do we bill our customers for their electrical usage? On what basis? And historically, what has been used is a flat monthly, either customer or a meter or a service charge is, is part of the, is part of the rate. There's always an energy charge, which is based on the kilowatt hours that get used by the customer. And then for your larger customers, we also use what's known as a demand charge. And your rates already have that feature. So anybody that's a commercial customer that uses 25 kilowatts or more of capacity per month on average is, is already paying that type of a structure. So we, we look at, we look at that and, and we try to make sure it gets set up in a way that allows us to recover cost of service in a way that's tied to what are, is tied to that rate so that we can send the right, what I call pricing signals to customers. And, and also we, we, we bring in things that are mentioned in the slide and I'll go through them that tie to how costs are being driven to the utility by things like your power supplier. So for example, number one, your current power supply cost from MMPA has a feature that's what I call seasonality. So in the, in other words, in the summer, your demand charge that you pay for power to MMPA is higher than in the winter. And so there really ought to be a way to tell your customers that, okay, in the summer, if you use electricity, it's going to cost you more. And in the winter, so that they can make the choice whether or not they want to use more or not. And so what the utility industry is trying to do is send those signals appropriately so that customers know when it's costing you as a utility more that they can adjust, hopefully adjust their, their practices and not use so much during those times. So you currently have as part of your rate schedule for your larger customers, you already have that built in in the demand rates. So your large industrial, your large general service customers already pay a summer demand that's higher than the winter demand. So that's, that's a good thing. I'm proposing that we extend that to all customers. So what we would do is we would make the summer energy rate, for example, for residential customers, a bit higher than the winter so that we send the signal to customers in the summer to try not to use as much electricity if you can. And, and vice versa, in the winter, it's lower and, and so we don't charge as much in the winter. So, so I'm suggesting that we put that into place and, and make it so that we're sending the signal to the customers to, to, to use or not use electricity based on what it's costing you more or less to buy. So that's, that's the first piece. Obviously, that doesn't mean much to you till you see the numbers and, and that will be the next step after we're, you know, going to move on to the next piece here. But in, in general, I want to, I would like to try to build that in so we continue to send that signal appropriately to all your customers. The second piece of your power supply rate structure from MMPA is what I call a time of use component. And, and right now, you pay for electricity at a different rate to MMPA depending on when you use that electricity during the day and on weekends. So there's an on-peak time during the day that it's the highest cost to you. So it costs you more to buy it. So there's an on-peak time during the day that it's the highest cost to you, so it costs you more to buy it during the on-peak time. Your off-peak times, it's it's much lower, so nights and so forth are a lot lower cost. And then weekends and holidays have a third, uh, cost associated with them. So every month, you get a bill from M N P A based on the number of kilowatt hours you use during those three time periods throughout the month. And so the utility industry is working toward sending those signals to their customers as well to let them know that it's costing more for you to provide that energy. And so the industry is working toward rates that reflect that. That's a big step because people aren't used to thinking about it in that way. And 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 so in our part of the world, in the Midwest, we haven't seen a lot of this yet. If you're out in California or some of the other coastal places, they have rates already structured like this. So I'm, I'm proposing that we start moving toward that. We don't go there today on every rate class. We start with the industrial, uh, large industrial customer class. In fact, they've already been paying on that basis for the last few years or so, I forget when it was put in place, but not, not too long ago. But but they're already paying on that basis so that energy used on on peak costs a little bit more than what it costs off peak. And and so that's a step in the right direction. And I am proposing that we make sure all large customers are on that basis when we're done with this rate study. And then as time goes by, we start adding more and more customers to that process. And that's going to be a big education process. It's going to be the type of thing you're going to need to tell the customers what's going on and what they need to do to try to save money. And the metering structure has to be in place, which I think it is, it just needs to be rolled out. And and so that's something down the road, but it's something I'm going to recommend we start moving toward. So that, again, tries to tie the cost of electricity that you buy to what you're charging your customers. So that's the second piece. The third item on there is, uh, the, uh, the service charge that you charge your customers. As I mentioned earlier, every customer class currently pays a flat amount every month, no matter how much you use. Uh, it's called the service charge. Um, the trend in the industry, and rightly so, is that those be raised to a higher level. And the point is, is that a lot of your costs for utility are fixed in nature. In other words, they don't vary based on usage, they're really pretty fixed. And traditionally, that's been a pretty, pretty small number that is actually applied. And and the utility industry is moving toward increasing that some. There's limits to that. We don't want to get carried away. Uh, obviously, as a detrimental effect on small users, which we don't want to do if we don't have to. But in general, I think the the appropriate thing to do is to try to raise those up and start moving toward a higher service charge. So I'm going to propose we do that. As we start looking at numbers down the road, we'll be able to decide where we want to end up with that. But I'm going to propose that we start making that, that move toward that. Um, fourth item, a couple of these, I'll just go through it real quickly. There's a, there's a few seasonal, what I call seasonal loads on your, on your system that use electricity in only certain parts of the year. And we somehow have to set our rates in a way that allows you to collect revenues from those customers throughout the rest of the year to cover the cost of serving them. And so I'm going to make a, uh, recommendation that we do that for a few customers. Uh, Jasper, if you could, uh, fast forward to the next one, I appreciate it. Two more things on on rate structure. You currently have a franchise fee and an underground fee in your rate structure. I'm going to recommend that we roll those into regular rates and not charge on that basis. This one may be one you want to think about and 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 talk about. But in reality, how it works is you're, it's just basically a way to raise revenue. And so I'm going to propose we just roll it into the regular rates as we do this rate study. And just make it part of the regular customer, uh, not customer charge, the, uh, the energy charge. I think it simplifies it, it makes the bill cleaner, unless there's a reason not to do that, which we can talk about. And if you would like to keep it this way, we certainly can do that. But, uh, I think, I think it's a, it's just simply a way of raising some revenue that we can roll into the rates and clean, and clean things up. And then finally, this last one is really a, a kind of a minor point in general. But the energy cost adjustment is something that you pass on through, uh, the, the charges you get from M N P A. Uh, it's done a little bit differently in your case than it is in most utilities. I'm going to recommend you kind of fix that up a little and and make it similar to what's done for, uh, most other, uh, electric facilities that I work with. Again, not a big deal. It doesn't change cost at all. It's just a matter of how you, how you structure. And while I'm restructuring your rates, we might as well do that. So, um, I guess I'll stop at that point. I kind of blew through that pretty quickly. A lot of this, like I said, doesn't probably make a lot of sense to you till you see some numbers and see what it really means, uh, which will start sending you down the road here when you get into, get to that point. But I did want to point out that, you know, at a high level, this is kind of the things we're looking at here and and wanted, uh, spend some time and attention to. So are there questions I can address on those items at this point?
I have a, I have a quick question for you, Mr. Metzger. Um, a lot, a lot of recommendations, a lot of changes you're recommending here. Um, how does one go about marketing this to the consumer, to the customer? So they have a pretty clear understanding of what, what direction we're going?
Yeah, so I think that's, that's really important. I like, I like the, uh, your, your staff has recommended that we take our time doing this and take the year, if you will, of twenty twenty-one to go through this process, make sure we get the, that information out to customers. So I, you know, I've seen that done several ways. Uh, obviously, you want to try to publicize it as, as much as possible so people know what's going on. Um, that can be done by billstuffers, um, or, or, you know, in their bill, uh, on the website. Uh, I've had, actually had situations where you've had, where the, the utility has called a public meeting and made me available, if you will, to present something to them and invited people to come and and hear what's going on. Um, gone so far as to sit down with individual larger customers if there's impacts to them, to go through that with, with them if you wish. I think just as many ways as you can think of to get, you know, to get the message out to people so that they know what it means before they get their first bill, and so they're not surprised. And and honestly, I'm going to be, you know, honest about it. Most of the time, even, even as hard as you might try, there's going to be a lot of people who don't really notice it or don't pay attention until, until they see it in their actual bill. I think you're doing the right thing by taking your time and and having as much public, you know, input as you can. And how far you want to go with that is is up to you in terms of meetings and 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 that sort of thing. But, uh, so those are kind of the things that I've seen before.
I, I kind of like what you, you mentioned about, you know, moving titles away, like franchise fees and underground fees just to simplify things so there's not so many questions that consumers might have.
I'm, I'm kind of a big believer in simplifying things if possible. I know we're, we're kind of working in this industry toward complication with all this time of use things and all the seasonality and all that. And we almost have to because that's how your cost structure is being affected. But to the extent we can simplify things, I think it's a good, good thing if we can, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, have Jasper speak to some things. Okay, thank you. Jasper, you mentioned earlier the Personnel and Budget Committee and their role. I, I think it would be helpful if you would explain to the council and to the public how the process works, how we look at this from a committee standpoint to make recommendations to the, uh, council. It, it takes some deep dive, some analysis, some back and forth. Uh, a good example would be, for example, talking about the franchise fee and really deeply, deep diving into what that means and how it works. Would you explain the process, please, Jasper? Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yeah, so generally speaking, we have some deadlines related to our levy, uh, that, that make us start our, our levy adoption first. Um, and then once we, once we adopt our preliminary levy, um, by the end of September, then we start working on the enterprise funds. What, what I think we're going to propose or what we're proposing this year, because, uh, there are so many, um, potential rate restructuring recommendations that would change would, would be kind of flipping that at least for the electric side so that it gives us adequate time to develop a, a communication plan to, to really try to communicate these changes to the public, um, to, to help them ease into some of the changes if they do have account changes. Um, but really, what, what the process is that Councilmember Krugman is alluding to is, um, when we establish a budget for the next year, for the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two year, um, what we do is we look at the budget and then we pair that with what we have for our, our rates and our rate structures and the amount of revenues that, that will generate with those rates. And then we make sure that it's at that time with the, with our best knowledge that it's balanced and that, um, we're not charging too much or we're not charging too little. Um, so, so that, I think that's the process that, that Councilmember Krugman's alluding to. And really, what the Personnel and Budget Committee does is they do a deep dive into why is the budget this way? What are the changes that are being proposed? You know, were there revenue deficiencies from last year? Which, um, twenty twenty, I, I know we, we stated it numerous times at Personnel and Budget and at the City Council meetings, our revenues didn't meet what the expectations were when we, when we adopted the, the budget because of the pandemic. And a lot of people changed the way they used electricity. You know, you saw, um, like business consumption go way down, um, on average, and then residential, uh, consumption go up, but they didn't, they didn't offset each other. So at the end of the day, we had, uh, a little bit less revenue than what we, what we thought we would, um, back in twenty nineteen when we adopted the twenty twenty budget. So a lot goes into it, um, looking at the, the different, um, things related to the revenue and budgets. The Personnel and Budget really, uh, committee looks at that very closely and then makes a recommendation to City Council. City Council then will have time to look at the numbers, um, and be able to give feedback and potentially either say, yeah, we think Personnel and Budget asked all the question that, questions that we had and we feel fine with, 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 uh, moving forward on it. Or they might kick it back down to Personnel and Budget and ask a few more questions. So, um, there's a pretty, pretty defined process as far as the rates go, if there are changes. And and generally, it's a recommendation from the Personnel and Budget Committee.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, this is Member Schleter. Blair, on item four, you talked about seasonal loads. Could you give an example of that so I can understand it better?
Sure. So let's, let's use, uh, like your rural customers, for example, there's some who have crop drying, uh, or, or irrigators. So those loads are only there for short amounts of time. So a, a, a crop dryer would be the best example, but only be operating maybe for a couple of months, October, November, whatever, harvest season. And yet, your, the, the, the infrastructure that you have to serve that load is there twelve months of the year. And so if they're only paying, uh, the charges that are accrued in those year, those months where they actually use it, you're not generating enough revenue really to pay off the cost it takes to serve those. So, so what we typically do is put in some kind of a floor where they pay at least some percentage of the, of their maximum throughout the year. So as you collect at least enough to cover the cost of serving them with, with your infrastructure. And it's not the full amount. It's not that they, they pay the full maximum amount all twelve months. It's, it's, it's some percentage of that that really ties to the cost of infrastructure, the transformer size and those kinds of things that, that you have spent to serve them. And so, uh, that type of load, there may, there's probably maybe some in, 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 in town as well. Like, I'm trying to think, a lot of communities have an elevator, is the same kind of a deal where they do a lot of drying in the, in the fall and and then don't use it much during the rest of the year. So, so it's that type of load. Does that, does that make sense? I mean, it's the kind of thing that only gets used a couple of months out of the year and it doesn't get used.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
We got a couple more slides real quick. Are we ready to move on? Okay, so I just real quick, the next step, I think we touched a little bit on this already. But, um, I'm, I'm going to start sending information up. Uh, staff has already seen a bunch of spreadsheets and a bunch of numbers. I don't know how much of that though, but you'll want to see. But we'll make that available to you so that you can look at numbers and and get a feel for what this means. Uh, yeah, I, I set up, I spent quite a bit of time trying to put comparisons together so that you can tell and you can know if we do this, what's it going to mean to my residential customers? And what does it mean to my other customers and that, so that you have a good feel for that. Uh, so I'll be sending that information to you. Uh, I would like feedback, you know, you know, ultimately, you'll be the one adopting this, so you need to get comfortable with it. And if you look at it and say, well, we don't, I don't like this because this, this isn't going to work, uh, you can have that feedback through staff back to me and, and I'll tweak it, come up with a different option. And and then we go back and forth until we get to where we can live with it. And then finally, we, we get to where you actually come up with a rate schedule that you'll adopt in, in mid-year again and and have ready to go for, uh, implementation in twenty twenty-two. So, so that's kind of the next steps, um, which we'll be working on soon so we can hopefully get things wrapped up in June or whenever the deadline is for that. So, um, that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's pretty much the, the next step. So that's really all I had to, to talk about on my, uh, on my end, I guess, just open maybe more questions, comments.
Anybody questions, comments, concerns? If not, Mr. Metzger, we appreciate your, your time tonight. You're very insightful. Um, this, uh, electric rate study can be somewhat complex. I, I know it's kind of hard to grasp at times for us, let alone the, the public. So, uh, we want to thank you for shedding a little bit of light, excuse the pun, on, uh, the electric study here. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to our next, uh, item, reconnecting Main Street, item number six B. Mr. Krugel, you want to, uh, lead us into that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kirby. Um, tonight is, is one of the steps, and you'll see this, we have, uh, City Engineer Bean Fang here to present on this. Um, but really, we're, we're making progress on the opening of Main Street. You can see they're, they're working on them all and they're doing their part as far as the development goes. Uh, the E D A tonight approved some revolving loan funds for some of the businesses to help them move from upstairs downstairs. So, uh, the items are really coming together and really we're making progress. And 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 tonight, what we're looking for is authorization to go out and bid, um, for these, for this project. And and once we receive bids, um, then City Council will still have another touch point to approve that bid. And just as far as the financing mechanism for this, uh, we're looking at selling a, um, a, a bond for this that, that we're working with and we'll present that to City Council, um, at a future date, uh, when, shortly after when the bids are approved. So, um, with that, I'll, I'll hand it off to Engineer Bean Fang to, to present and and, uh, work on the project.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, thank you, Jasper. If you don't mind advancing the slide for me. Um, so as Jasper, um, did so good and introduced it tonight, we're, we're rolling in the next step of this project process. Um, just about a month ago, we came with a preferred concept. Um, and and really, the final plans that were ordered at that time for us to proceed with very closely matched that. There was a lot of thought, um, a lot of planning and and preparation into that preferred concept to really solve the identity and and really the goal of Main Street. So I would say, you know, the, the underlying message tonight is that final design was really, uh, you know, the detail, the implementation of that concept. And so that, that is, uh, very much a, a truth and reality. Um, nonetheless, so we, we wanted to come back and and touch and and communicate that message. Um, since we last met, we also did our second corridor meeting. Uh, we wanted to make sure that those directly adjacent to Main Street, the businesses had an opportunity to, um, to, you know, be presented the information that they were planning to move forward with and, um, be able to provide any, any input. Um, the, the meeting was, I'd say, minimally attended, uh, via what, you know, the virtual bub X here. We did record that and that's been made available. And so we did get a lot of feedback and and hopefully, you know, that's perceived as a, as a positive that we, that we took that input early on. And we had a, you know, meeting at, at that concept development phase. Um, and so hopefully, you know, there was, there was a reason for, I guess, the minimal, the limo, minimal commenting is because we, we, uh, we took that to heart and solved it. Um, so where we find ourselves tonight, as Jasper noted, is we're, we're there, we're making the final preparations and and really need to, to, to progress towards that, that official advertising, that official, um, getting of, of competitive bids. Um, and that schedule's been laid out here for you. Um, really, the month of March is to capture that um, and then open bids that, that first day of April. And then really remind, um, you know, that we would then come back and the council has full authority and in consideration then to, to move forward with those bids. It's really an, an understanding of that, of that market cost, that, that lowest responsible bid number um, that really then is considered and, and, um, allowed to be evaluated to move forward then with, with an actual implementation, a, a true construction contract. Um, that really then is considered and, and um, allowed to be evaluated to move forward then with, with an actual implementation, a, a true construction contract. Um, and again, as, as been kind of the underlying theme, um, similar to the mall schedule here, really full construction and remodeling this summer, uh, Main Street's on a similar path. Um, so I'd say something a little untraditional is that I don't anticipate this to be a full summer project. So it'd be, it'll be, um, I guess, you know, to be determined if this is an, an earlier start and hopefully a, a more um, early, early fall, late summer completion, or if it's something that starts a little later summer and still carries into the fall. So something to, I guess, to, you know, that we'll be watching for. But I'd anticipate three months, three to, three to four months here to complete this. So not a, a full season like we experienced with the Turnback Project, say. So if you don't mind Jasper.
Hey Cory.
Yes, go ahead.
As a member, so can you just uh, explain what you mean by lowest responsible bidder?
Yeah, I sure can. I appreciate that. So within the, within the, the final specifications, which is something that we've mentioned tonight, um, there's a contract. Um, and within the contract, then there's an obligation of, of a, of a responsible bidder. Um, you know, securing subs that aren't debarr'd um, from the Department of Labor. Um, so it's, it's, I guess, a fulfillment of all those contract obligations to submit a bid. Um, the, you know, the, the bid bond, um, things like that, um, reputation within the industry of, of doing good work, legal work, uh, paying their subs, reputable work. And so those are all things that we evaluate um, at the time of receiving bids. And then we have fulfilled that evaluation and then we present that data to you as a council body. Um, and, and make a recommendation ultimately for your consideration. So that it's an evaluation to, to make sure that, that um, that lowest bidder, um, is to the best that we're able to, um, you know, validate that they're, they're competent bidder, if that makes sense.
Right. And so essentially, I mean, there's potential that we could get a bid that's low, but then that could be rejected because they're not qualified, so to say. Is that kind of?
It is. It's very possible. Um, on, on public projects utilizing public money, um, there is a lot of emphasis on the lowest bidder. Um, just realizing that that's the best value to the public. Um, so it, it is rare, wouldn't say it's never um, possible where that lowest bidder isn't the one that, that is deemed to be the comp responsible. But um, nonetheless, it's, it's, it's an admittance that now, just because you submit the lowest number, um, that, that isn't a shoo-in, so to speak, that, that you're guaranteed the project. Try to, try to maintain some authenticity, you know, I think authenticity to that, to that bidding process. So.
Perfect. Thank you.
I appreciate the question. Um, so this concept here is, is something that, you know, it, it's hopefully uh, not, not a new, a new concept or, you know, something that, you know, being seen for the first time and um, so it's really a, a capturing of that final concept. And um, it's much prettier to look at than, than black and white plans. But um, admittedly, this is, this is consistent with what we've been talking about. Um, on a, on a emphasis of a, of a, you know, a, a full street, you know, it's, it's not just the utilities or the concrete road, but it's the, the festival, the um, the emphasis on, on the pedestrian uh, passage. Um, some, some, you know, aesthetic with the street lighting. This concept here doesn't show the tree canopy, but, but admittedly that there's, that there's a hard and a soft scape, you know, the, the hard, there's a lot of concrete here inherently. So then the emphasis on the greenery and the, and the, the landscape ads that you see here literally in green. Um, so you know, it's, it's something, hopefully again, it's, it's familiar, but um, just reemphasizing that, that the plans that we're asking to approve tonight and what we're really gonna be asking the contractor to build, um, is, is, is rendered here as, as you see it literally. So if you don't mind Jasper. And then the, the next one here is just uh, to talk then, I guess, to show the, the tree canopy. Um, I believe that slides in here. And, and again, you know, with the, with the corridor meeting, you know, hopefully capturing um, the needs of, of the corridor as well with the mall. We've had some coordination here. Um, with, with, with their contractor and, and making sure that the construction's feasible as well and and, and meeting, you know, the needs, long, uh, and that, that, that dream and vision of, of what this connected Main Street looks like. So if you don't mind Jasper. And then, you know, one of the other things that we, uh, we talked about, um, I think at the concept phase and, and really, you know, capturing was there, there's and a couple of the unique features that we wanted to just, you know, emphasize tonight is one here, this is the, the corner of Bridge Street, uh, main capturing that, that di, that di, that dynamic kiosk or that, um, you know, message display sign. Um, bringing in that, that structural steel element that we've talked about. Um, you can see the land, the limestone capturing. I think when we approved the concept, uh, I'd, I'd shown some screenshots of that three D rendering and, and visualization. So this is just a little bit more detail and into that, um, that kiosk there on the corner, really the, the gateway to Main Street, gateway to Lee Sewer. So we're, we're pretty excited about, about, you know, this aesthetic look and really the, the benefit that it can provide by, by welcoming folks with the, with the, with the, a physical message as, as they enter and, enter our community. If you don't mind Jasper. And then the next slide here, um, is capturing uh, that block crossing. And really the, the emphasis on um, that, that mid-block of Main Street, um, that's uh, on the east side there, that'll be the main entrance of the mall, um, for, for the, the west side businesses and um, those upstairs apartments, that west side entry is, is really fixated on that mid-block. Um, and then, you know, just, just a, you know, that raised cross and that we've been talking about, that four-inch crossing, not to really be a speed bump by any means, but have an element of, of traffic calming, have an element of, of a safe passage for pedestrians. And then bringing in that, that kind of structural steel, that, that bridging, um, you know, our industry, uh, that element there with, with those decorative monitations. Um, that'll have, they'll have some aesthetic lighting with them as well. The, the literalness of the river and the blue, um, that waving pattern through the pavement, that'll, that'll be literal. That color will show um, here in that, in the final product. And then again, that, that raised pedestrian walkway that you said on the east side, just consistently all throughout. If you don't mind Jasper. So just then, uh, just to reiterate and, and um, you know, cover again, so really what we're asking for tonight, um, on, on a, on a traditional street and reconstruction project, how we're doing assessments, this is a very little process where there's a resolution. Um, and, 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 you know, an acknowledgement that this step has to be followed literally. You know, on any project where we're, we're moving forward and, and, you know, we're gonna be spending money or at least a consideration to, to ask for bids to spend money. Um, you know, we think it's, it's very right to, to come and get that approval to do so, um, to, to physically acknowledge that we're gonna be advertising in the paper. Um, and, and asking for contractors to have been on a project that, you know, we are hopeful to, to be able to, to, to support the affordability and move forward within the construction. So that's where we find ourselves tonight. Prove those plans and allow us to, to advertise for bids. So I'd be happy to, um, Jasper, if I miss anything, we'd love for you to, to fill that and, and then answer any questions if there are any.
Um, Mayor Kirby, if I may, um, just.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, you know, I kind of mentioned this in the beginning, but um, you know, the, all of the project partners that I would identify, um, you know, the, the property owners, uh, the mall developer, the EDA. Um, they're all, they're all doing what they said they were going to do, um, you know, for this project. And that's great, right? We've been able to, to kind of facilitate all that. And this is a, a big moving target, but it's all kind of coming together. Um, as far as uh, getting this project done this year. So it's very exciting for the community, you know, it, it's, it's outlined in our comprehensive plan as something that we, we wanna pursue as a city and, and opening up of Main Street. So, um, it's a, it's a, it's a big thing for the city and it's a big change. And I think there's a lot of people that are excited.
Thank you, Mr. Krugel. And thank you, uh, City Engineer Bean Fang. It was a very uh, um, insightful presentation you just gave. I'm looking forward to this summer. It's, it's gonna be fun watching all this uh, come together. Um, I'm pretty excited about it myself. Anybody have any questions for um, our City Engineer, Mr. Bean Fang?
Mayor, go ahead.
Mayor, if I remember Sullivan. Hey Jasper, maybe, uh, maybe this isn't a question that you can answer tonight, but have you had any communication with the bank as to how they're looking to proceed now that this is a final process, or I mean, potentially a final process, have they done any more with what they plan to do in the future?
He, I, I can give you an update as far as our communications have gone, um, uh, Councilmember Sullivan. And we are in communication. They have seen this. Um, to my knowledge, I don't know if they've made a, a final decision on what they're going to do, but they, they know what the layout looks like and we hope that um, they're able to fit within that constraints of that, that layout.
Okay. And, and I'm assuming Cory, we, there's some things built into this, kind of assuming that they're eventually gonna make some changes, correct?
There, there is, Mr. Um, Mr. Sullivan, there is. Yeah, I think to the greatest extent that we're able, we're looking at, you know, future driver location, trying to be mindful of how we place things. Um, we're certainly going to be stubbing services into lots that have a potential to be developed or redeveloped. Um, so I think we're, we're trying to, to design as much for the future as, as we possibly can, realizing there's some uncertainty. Um, you know, there, there's only so much, but we are, we are, we are building this as flexibly uh, as, as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Krogman. I'm gonna make an observation here. Uh, first of all, I very much appreciate what we have here. And certainly look forward to this motion to approve the plans. But I, I wanna make one observation. I'm not going to ask people necessarily to respond. But it strikes me that we have to be careful that we don't fashion one beautiful block in the middle of town called Reconnecting Main Street and forget that south and north of that, we may wanna have some kind of coordination, some kind of thematic presentation that says this town has it all together, not one block next to them all. And I, I might be out of place to even ask if there's any thought to that. But I at least wanna put a pitch in to say we need to consider it in the future so that we have sometime thematic presentation throughout the entire downtown area. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Councilmember Krogan. That was a good observation. Thank you very much.
Now, Mayor, Mayor Kirby, could I add something real quickly? Just uh, okay, thank you. Um, so I think everyone's aware, uh, that the CASA thirty-six, the South Main project is um, proposed to happen uh, in twenty twenty-two. And that's an extension from where we're talking about right now to the south. There will be features that will try to make um, kind of blend in and follow the general theme that we're, that we've produced here. So the idea is that there are some businesses to the south side of, of, of this block that we're talking about right now that will have some of the themes and, and features that we um, incorporate here. So this is kind of setting the tone for future projects in that area. So uh, we have every intention to, to kind of not just have it be one block, but, but keep it extending um, out to the, to the south. And then it, once there's a project someday in the future to the north. Um, and kind of using this as kind of the, the basis and backbone um, to, to help form that whole corridor um, of Main Street. So we're thinking about it and, and, and definitely we, we're gonna need support from uh, City Council and the community to, to do so as, you know, there, there is um, you know, added costs to some of these features, definitely.
Thank you.
Mayor Kirby, Member Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Hey Jasper, just to follow up on that statement, I know, so when we did the County Road twenty-two project, we put off doing that section of Main Street just to the north. And I know at that time we talked about that that's gonna be in the short-term future or maybe ten-year plan. Is that correct? That we're gonna be looking at that somewhere down the line in the near future, somewhat near future?
Uh, y- yep, uh, if I could answer that, you're correct, right? Now it's not in our ten-year plan. So if you remember last year, we adopted a ten-year plan. Uh, we're gonna keep looking at it and looking at the pavement condition and the utility condition and, and insert that. I would say Cory, if you wanna correct me, but I would say probably within the next fifteen to twenty years, I would say it's in that timeframe to, to do that utility reconstruction and then rehab that, that section to the north.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I think that's very fair. And, you know, Councilmember Sullivan, if you recall, it, it really is an admittance that that payment condition is, is just, is not quite aged to the extent yet where, where it's gonna allow for, for a substantial as an upgrade as we're talking about in like South Main around thirty-six, you know, that you, it's, it's admitted, admittedly that it's aging. Um, it just comparatively, I don't think it's in that, that ten-year first priority window. Um, so I think Jasper captured it, I think perfectly. I think we'd be looking at, you know, CIPs ideally don't just stop at, at the, at year ten. So, you know, really capturing that next ten years, I think you'd find it, you know, right there in the middle likely. Um, that, that fifteen-year out window, I think is right where you'd see Main Street. And admittedly, we are doing some, right? It's just, it's just really that northern area, that Cathcart Market area north. That's what's being addressed literally in twenty-two. So you'd find, we'd find ourselves with a middle, a middle area then. Um, really from Bridge Street to, you know, Cathcart that, that would be in that, that, I would, that, that next area up. So.
Essentially where I was getting at is this, you know, we're doing the south end of Main Street, you know, in twenty twenty-two, have the ability to incorporate some of this stuff into that. Ten, fifteen years down the road, we're gonna have the ability to incorporate some of this stuff into the north end of town as well. And that's kind of what I was looking for. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And then if I just add one other thing, you know what? What makes South Main unique and, and Councilmember Krogman kind of acknowledged that, that there is a, there is a uniqueness to this design is that admittedly, this is a local street. And so you get a lot more design flexibility too with the local street, whereas understandably, South Main and North Main, those are county roads and, and, you know, serve a different purpose, serve a different function and ultimately have a different agency that are a part of that collaboration and, and that design. So um, admittedly, uh, some uniqueness to this design and, and, and what ultimate we're, we're able to do just because we, we do have full control here. So again, not to say that the, that these features can't be blended and extended. Um, just, just, just the consideration for them uh, is, is a little bit different as you go north and south. So.
Thank you, City Engineer, Engineer Bean Fang. With that, the uh, staff is recommending that the City Council approve the final plans and specifications for the South Main Street Reconnection Project and allow for the official advertisement of bids is outlined in the schedule. With that, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved to Member Sullivan.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Sullivan. You got a second?
This is Member Schlitter. I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlitter. Uh, any other discussion? Comments, concerns? Otherwise, we'll turn it over to City Administrator Krugel for a roll call.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Krogman.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Member Mahoney.
Hi.
Councilmember Schlitter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Now circling back to the uh, uh, item four C, which is now six C, Economic Development Authority Appointment. Krugel, you wanna cover that for us?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Kirby. Um, so item six C, the, the EDA appointment, uh, we received, or I'll, I'll start from uh, the, the beginning. The Economic Development Authority has a vacancy with a term ending um, on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. So the end of this year. Jacqueline Fay has applied to fill the vacancy. Um, Jackie is, is also the new uh, La Sure Chamber of Commerce Executive Director. Um, her application was included in the packet, um, and it gave some information on, on just her history and, and what, what she, uh, if she can prove to the, to the EDA. Um, what we're looking for tonight is just consideration of the appointment of Jacqueline Fay to the La Sure EDA uh, with a term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Uh, and with that, I'll entertain any, any questions and, and discussion points.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Krogman. I ask that this be removed to here. Normally we would make a motion for the appointment, have a second and then have discussion, but I would ask uh, in your discretion for permission to talk about this for just a few minutes. Yeah, please. I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I couldn't hear you. Yeah, oh, please do. I thought I was muted. Yeah, go ahead. That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council members, uh, when I saw this on the agenda, uh, the way I describe it is it raised a flag for me. And uh, I phrase it as, I wonder about the appropriateness. I'll say that again. I wonder about the appropriateness of having a hired official who works for the Chamber of Commerce, the Executive Director, be on the EDA. And I really need your insights on this. It just, there's something that strikes me that this may not be appropriate. It's not the individual. It is not her qualifications. It is not her as a person or what she brings as a person to it. It's the fact that she is also in the middle, so to speak, as a director, Executive Director of a chamber with a number of people to whom she would be responsible and then being on the EDA. with a number of people to whom she would be responsible, and then being on the EDA. So I'm just, I wonder if you could help me with this as we process this. I, I'm catching cold, only a couple of people know of this ahead of time.
Mayor, Mayor Kirby, Member Sullivan.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I actually, this was a red flag to me as well, I, um, and Jackie, I, I very much appreciate that she applied for it, I think she's going to do great things with the chamber. Um, but I know from serving on the EDA in the past, the Chamber of Commerce also receives money from the EDA awards, um, and from the city, so I, I agree that I feel like this might be just conflict of interest that we maybe don't want to set that up.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, if I, if I may weigh in a little bit, gentlemen and ladies, um, this EDA position that, uh, Ms. Fay he's applying for here is, is not a paid position, as we both know, the, the chamber position, of course, is. Both, both entities try to promote, promote business, commerce and, and economic growth here in our community. And I, I kind of think that they accent each other, and, and I think she would do a, do a very, very good job with the balance of both, so that, that's kind of my feeling on, on this subject. Anybody else want to weigh in?
This is, um, Member Mahoney, if I can say something as well. I agree with Mayor Kirby that I, I guess my feeling was that I think the two positions would complement each other, but I think that maybe if there were concerns of having there be a conflict there, that maybe she could recuse herself of matters where there needed to be a vote on where the chamber would be receiving funding.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahoney. Anyb- anybody else have an opinion?
Mayor, this is Member Schleter.
Yes, sir.
I also foresee there could be conflicts of interest on multiple things going forward, the more I think about it.
Thank you. Um, City Administrator Krugel, is, is she the only applicant that we have?
Mayor Kirby, yeah, yeah, that is correct, we've only received one application for this position, um, since, uh, Representative Farr resigned. Uh, so, uh, if, if, you know, just going down the path of the two different scenarios, if, if we weren't to a point, we would, we would still continue to market this position and as an application or application comes in, we, we would bring it to City Council at that time. But, but we've only received one so far.
Okay. Um, so I, I, I think at this time, I, I think we can open the floor up for any, any, um, nominations if, if they want to, uh, if we want to nominate her and, and vote on that, I think we should move ahead and do so.
Mayor Kirby, Councilmember Swanberg, I make a motion that we approve the application of Jackie Fay he to fill the vacancy.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg, we have a motion made to have, uh, Jackie Fay he uh, fill that position, I'd like to second that motion. Is there any other discussion? Comments, concerns? If not, we'll turn it over to, uh, City Administrator Krugel for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, uh, we got Councilmember Krugman.
I'm going to make a quick comment when I vote no, and it again, does not apply to the person personally. It's because of the potential conflict with the two positions.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Hi.
Councilmember Schleter.
No.
Councilmember Sullivan.
No, with the same statement as Councilmember Krugman.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And then Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
All right, motion passes, uh, four, three.
Thank you, everybody. Congratulations to, uh, Jackie Fay he. Uh, we're looking forward to working with you on the EDA, so that'll, that'll be exciting. At this time, we're going to move on to the, uh, towards the end of the meeting here with our comments, reports, items of appreciation, and, uh, I like to start from the top and work our way down on the list there, so Councilmember Krugman, if you have anything you'd like to share?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lozey.
I got nothing for you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes, just a, um, quick update from the Planning Commission, I was able to attend my first meeting on February eleventh after Member Krugman passed it over to me, I appreciate that. Um, they just reviewed a couple zoning codes around pools and fences, and then talked about planning for our future of the city forum.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Mahoney. Uh, Councilmember Schleter.
Since our last council meeting, I had one Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting on the seventeenth. The biggest thing that came out of it is early March movers will be in to do an onsite move of residents in preparation for the start of the Walkway Project on March fifteenth. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan, you have anything you'd like to share with us?
I, just a quick update on the EDA, um, we did have a meeting tonight. Um, and as Jasper alluded to earlier, we did approve four revolving loans for current businesses, or three current businesses and one new business that's going to be coming to town. Um, that will be located in the mall, so, and then just welcome Jackie to the EDA.
Thank you, thank you. And, uh, lastly, Councilmember Swanberg, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg. Uh, I have nothing to share, other than I'm going to turn it over to our administrator, uh, Mr. Krugel, maybe a little bit of pep talk for next Monday night.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mayor Kirby, um, we do have our rescheduled, uh, retreat, uh, scheduled for Monday, March first, uh, starting at five PM. Uh, the agenda's out there already, I'm, I'm, I'm planning on adding a few things to the packet here this week, so look for that. Um, if you would like to, it's a pretty small packet already, I think it's only about eight pages, if you would like to have one printed off and delivered to your house, just let me know and I can, I can arrange for that at the end of this week. Um, so you have a full packet, um, once there's an update to it. Uh, so, yeah, we're going to be looking at a couple code updates, talking about the community center, uh, indoor pool. Uh, we're going to do some goal setting as far as the, the city goes and, and what we want to do over the next couple of years, so uh, it's, it's generally a pretty good time and we have, we have good conversations and really kind of set the table for, for what we want to accomplish, uh, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, so looking forward to it and, and, and happy to, to help facilitate it and, and, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, City Administrator Krugel. With that, we will see you all next Monday night, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to shut her down.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Lozey, do I got a second?
Member Mahoney will second.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahoney, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? No. Okay, good night, everybody, and thank you for your time tonight, I really appreciate it. We'll see you Monday.